All right, on behalf of Lackawanna City Council and members of the department heads, I welcome everyone to our caucus for Monday, April 25th, 2022, Lackawanna City Council Meeting. As most already know, the caucus is an opportunity for us as council members to review the agenda and each item so that if there are any questions or any issues prior to voting, all of those could be explored. And to that end, looking at the agenda, we have the hearings, roll call hearings from citizens, approval of minutes, departmental reports are all administrative, starting with communications from division and department heads. Item number three from Director of Recreation, Laxo, requests city council approve a lease agreement between city and healthy Buffalo Softball League, previous to Veterans Stadium on each Tuesday between May 31st and August 31st, 2022. Proof of insurance was included and the full text of the agreement is available at the clerk's office. Anyone wish to ask any questions or generate any discussion on that item number three? All right, moving to item number four from the city controller, we are advised that the famous Commissioner of Public Works, Anthony DeSantis, is retired effective April 15th, 2022. And I'm sure as a citizen and member of the city council, we'd like to thank Tony very much for his heroic efforts through good times, bad times, crises, and major snowfalls, so on and so forth. He's done exemplary job and deserves our deepest gratitude for what he's been able to accomplish during his career. I don't know how we're going to replace him when the time comes. Anyone wish to comment on item number four?
I just personally like to thank Tony for any problem that I came up with and I talked to him. He remedied it and he's done a fantastic job. Really, he's going to be missed. You're absolutely right.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman. Anyone else?
Yeah, no, thanks, Tony. Thanks for everything.
Thanks, guys.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yes.
Oh, thank you.
I would like to just, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Councilman.
Yeah, I was going to ask you about number three there. Where are these people from? They're from Buffalo, right?
Correct.
And they've been coming for quite a while?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, they traditionally have utilized both veterans and Memorial Field with a rental fee for the year of $1,000. It's down to $500 this year because they're only utilizing veterans due to the fact that we're not putting any games on Memorial. It's pretty much a standard year-to-year agreement that we use on one of our off nights for the league games.
All right, I was wondering why it was only $500. I mean...
Yeah, they're all, because our DPW is doing half the work, so that's the reason for the decrease because they're not utilizing both fields.
It's 14 Tuesdays, that's $35 a Tuesday. That ain't bad.
I mean, we could revisit it, we could always revisit it if you'd like.
All right, I'm just wondering why it went down.
All right, yeah, well, again, it's, you know, they're playing half the games, so that's why, you know, the decision to charge them half the price. Again, if you'd like to revisit the price, I'm open to suggestions. If I may, while I've got the floor, I just wanted to say, when I first took this job, Tony DeSantis was invaluable to me. He helped me through so many procedures and processes that I had never been through before, and I really appreciate his guidance when I first got on it and it continued through, you know, even to this day, and he's going to be borderline irreplaceable, but my appreciation for his assistance, I just wanted to make it known that it meant a lot to me. He's great, I wish him nothing but the best.
Thank you, Director Laxo. And yeah, for the public's consumption, Tony DeSantis was instrumental in everything regarding repairs, reconstruction, all projects in existence in the pipeline in the city of Lackawanna, including road pavings and redoing roadways, including Center Street, which is about to start, all of the parks, all the playgrounds, the plowing, the garbage collection, so on and so forth. It's, most people would be underwater with responsibility to be like that, but Tony never shared his responsibility and was always asking what else he could do. Irreplaceable, in my opinion. All right, moving on to...
Fred, Fred, it's Rick. While talking about this subject, I've added three paragraphs to tenants' responsibilities under the fourth article of that contract, so if we can approve it, subject to the city attorney's changes or to any changes that the city attorney may have, I would appreciate that.
For item number three, Rick?
Yeah, that's on the lease.
Yeah, okay.
What did you add?
So, calm down. At paragraph four, paragraph four, I added, "Tenants shall not be allowed to store any personal property on the premises without our written consent. Tenant shall make no alterations to the premises without our written consent, and they should not dump any filled topsoil or sod on the premises without our written consent." So I'm going to put that on all our standard recreation leases. I just want to make sure before anybody does anything, they come back to the city and request our approval or consent.
Well, thank you for your intuition on that, especially since we experienced a problem in the past recently.
Okay, everybody, we're good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Item number five, communication from the city controller advising us that Lieutenant Robert Janowski has retired from the Lackawanna Police Department, and similarly, we'd like to thank Bobby for all his, for his service, which was exemplary during his term, and we wish him Godspeed and a healthy and prosperous retirement. Anyone wish to comment on item number five? Item number six...
Let me just check one more time. Another guy that I worked with for many years, if you didn't like Bob Janowski, you just weren't trying. It was probably your fault. One of the nicest guys you're ever going to meet, and I wish him nothing but the best as well.
Well put, Director. Anyone else? All right, moving on to item number six, Director of Public Safety, requests city council approval for fire department advertised bids for new personal protective equipment. Funds are available to DAS NY grant. Similarly, there's a communication that I believe we read in our packets from Fire Chief Fino along the same lines. He kind of outlines the equipment that they're looking to replace. Anyone have any comments on item number six?
How much was the grant? Doesn't say.
Not, Mr. Sirdak, I'm not exactly sure what the exact number was on that, but I know that the money is available now and, like always, we'll purchase the stuff and be reimbursed. It was through Pat Burke's office. There's been several different ones. I want, I know one was for $225,000. I'm not sure how much this one was.
And we should include a thank you to Assemblyman Burke on that for his help in securing that grant.
Absolutely.
Anyone else? All right, item number seven, from Lauren Jednick, Director of Development, requests city council approve a task resolution pertaining to the splash pad project. Excuse me, as we're all aware, there were archaeological concerns at the Memorial Field Site, requiring a relocation to the Franklin Playground site for this splash pad, and a resolution to that effect is being requested. Anyone have any comments or questions? Moving on to item number eight, yes?
I'm sorry to interrupt you. Councilman Sirdak, I just checked the paperwork, $160,000 was the grant.
It's great, thank you, thank you.
Okay.
All right, item number eight from the city attorney, attached the synopsis for the new law passed by New York State Legislature regarding the Open Meetings Law and Permits for Video Conferencing. Is it a complete file, a copy on the file at the city clerk's office? I don't know what the council's pleasure is on this, but I believe this is something that the council should consider enacting through a resolution. I believe that's all that's necessary, but it gives some latitude for extreme circumstances and allows for participation both through the public and for the council members to participate through video conferencing if necessary. Anyone wish to comment on that item?
Yeah, me again, Kevin Sirdak. It's pretty much, we got to have the meetings. You got to have a quorum at a certain place, you got to have the video conferencing, people got to be able to attend, so obviously, we can't all stay at home, so we got to look into that down the road. I think we got, it says hidden here, we got 60 days from April 9th. We can do Zoom for 60 days, but then we got to, I'm sure a city clerk might know more about it, or Gene, about where we're going to have to run meetings.
City Clerk, you're muted. Jeff DePasquale, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Yeah, I read it the same way Councilman Sirdak read it. It's basically a transition from what we're doing now to either full-fledged meetings or the allowance of video conferencing under certain circumstances and under certain guidelines. I did forward that to the city attorney for his interpretation, you all got copies. So I guess in a nutshell, we've got to start absent, you know, some circumstances, we've got to start gearing back towards doing business in chambers, I would think.
Jeff, how much time, how has the Zoom allowance been extended, and if so, to what date?
Okay, the Zoom allowance per se, I did not see where it was extended. I think the legislature passed this legislation in lieu of that to set some guidelines for in the event we need to go in video conference like we're doing now, but from what I read, they're giving us 60 days to kind of get back into, into the normal way of doing business. So as Councilman Sirdak said, the legislation was passed April 9th, that would give us till June 9th, so whatever meeting after June 9th, short of some type of circumstance that we can't be together, we would be back in chambers. That's how I read it, but again, I did forward it to the council president, or I'm sorry, to, well, I did do that too, but to the law department, and I can call NICOM tomorrow to see if they have anything more specific than what we've just discussed.
Are we at will to go back to in-person meetings and not be in violation of anything?
We had, we had the authority to go back to meetings all along, it was just that the governor extended our ability to do it via Zoom. So anytime the council so chooses to go back to council chambers, they certainly have the right to do so, but I think this legislation pretty much says after 60 days, short of some extenuating circumstances, you should be back doing your meetings. That's how I read it, but again, I'm not an attorney, so.
Yeah, I think that's, but it's what it's intended for. Maybe as a suggestion, we table this item to the next meeting to allow us to get more information and background on it without jeopardizing the 60 days we have to enact any necessary legislation.
So, can I, can I have the floor for a minute?
Yeah.
Okay, so my reading of it is it permits video conferencing, it doesn't extend the remote meetings, which is what we're having now, and I agree with Jeff, I think we're good until June 9th. The benefit of the video conferencing would be if one or two of the board members couldn't make the meeting, but you wanted to have the meeting, then they could appear by video conference. Likewise, if the department head was unavailable, or more than one of the department head was unavailable, and you wanted to carry on the meeting, then the department heads could appear by video conferencing. So I think it's good to have a policy on it. I'll go one step further and I'll see if I can draft something for your, you know, for the council's review, and then, you know, it's up to you guys if you want to pass it.
So tabling it to the next meeting would give us enough time to...
Yes.
Yeah, okay, that's something for all of us to consider then, Rick, thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Yeah, Councilman Sirdak, that's why I brought it up, because I know we got to act on it within the next two months, and you got to have a quorum present at the, wherever we hold our meetings, and there are certain excuses that the other council members can use. It's all, it's all in here. So, thanks, Rick, thanks.
All right, anyone else on that issue? All right, moving on to item number nine, communication from a city clerk. Smith's copies have recently completed audits performed by the Office of New York State Controller pertaining to network management and controls and garbage collection fees. We've had an opportunity to review the audits for our comments, and the only concern I had was the recommendation and the requirement included in the garbage collection fees that indicates there is a shortfall in our code in addressing certain exemptions, if I remember correctly. So they're looking to the city council to remedy that situation. So I would suggest perhaps this matter be referred to city controller or city assessor and our law department for a recommendation on any remedial legislation that may be needed. Apparently, there's some exemptions and some properties that are exempt that it isn't clear as to why they're being exempt from the garbage fees. Anyone wish to comment on that item? Yes, sir.
Number, page 11, said that some of the information was sensitive, so it was communicated to the city officials confidentially. So I don't know, were you, were you in the loop with that, Fred, or no?
No.
Okay, and it says that the council has a responsibility to initiate corrective action, so we have to...
Would you repeat that again?
The council has a responsibility to initiate corrective action, which we seem to be doing, and we have 90 days to submit a report. It's on page 11 of the one and page 13 on the other.
Yes, so again, my feeling is it should be referred to the assessor, the controller, and the law department for a recommendation as to remedial legislation that's needed.
Awesome.
Unless somebody else has other ideas. Anyone else wish to comment on that? All right, we have communication from citizens. Last motion submitted a communication to the city council regarding 23 and 27 Washington Street. Hopefully, everybody reviewed his letter, this matter's been lingering for some time. He has wished to purchase that property, he had purchased property next to it and rehaved the house. That was according to his letter, near condemnation, which is now a viable entity on the tax rolls, and he's requesting the purchase of the vacant lot. Apparently, the city owns next door to that, to his home, and he hasn't received any satisfaction or any direction. I believe this should be entertained and referred to the appropriate departments for the recommendation as to whether it should be sold, whether it needs to be, again, we, the city has a policy for the sale of city-owned property. I do believe we should follow that policy, but we need to, we need a recommendation as far as this request, I believe, from either development, assessment, and the law department. Anyone wish to comment on this?
Um, Council President, I was, this was brought to my attention back in January, and then with a follow-up in February. My concern is that there isn't any continuity or directive as to what chain of commands one should follow when inquiring about a property that they want to purchase, especially one that seems to be a bit tedious, or for lack of better terms, frustrating to the resident. I was present when the bid was made, it was done here, the assessor's office, on February 22nd, and I was just curious to know what, what follows. It's been two months since then, and I personally haven't received any information or updates. I don't know if I'm entitled to one, to be quite frank, however, how does this, how do we mobilize this from just being a request to actually it coming into fruition?
I believe it should be referred to the assessor and the director of development for a recommendation as far as the sale. I believe it's an appropriate starting point for a letter to come to the city council for a request to put on a, put in a bid on a purchase of a piece of city-owned property, but as you so well pointed out, Amira, the policy that's on the books, it doesn't seem to be either very clear or isn't followed, so that is a side issue, I think, but eventually we're going to need to deal with that. In the meantime, though, we need to deal with this request and perhaps referring it to the before-set departments with their opinion and recommendation for the next meeting will be appropriate, so this doesn't linger any further. That's my take on it.
Very well.
Anyone else have a point on that issue? All right, then, we have one business registration. Nadika Evans, EBA Nicky's Family Diner at 1245 Ever Road. Looking at the materials and the approvals from the various departments responsible for checking the premises, there was a notation from Officer Gorsika that records, as of yet, had not been received from the city of Buffalo regarding, and I would take the person's background, a background check or whatever. Does anyone know if those records have been received? If they have not been received, then my suggestion is this matter be tabled until we do receive those records, so we have full disclosure before we proceed with the approval.
It's my understanding, and I've actually seen them, so yeah, we have received them.
Director, is there any, anything in those documents that should be of a concern to the council?
No.
So you think the application should be approved?
Yeah, yeah, I signed on that, yes, it's okay, so yes.
Okay. Right, Director Jenick, thank you very much for jumping in on that. Does anyone else have any comments on that request? Okay, if that's the totality of the agenda, no further issues, what I'd like to do is formally call to order the regular city council meeting for the city of Lackawanna to order for April 25th, 2022, and request that everybody rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation, indivisible, with freedom, justice, and...
Thank you. Mr. City Clerk, would you take the role?
Absolutely, Mr. Council President. Council Muflahi?
Present.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Here.
Sirdak?
Here.
Morano?
Here.
Department Heads Law?
Present.
Development?
Present.
Public Works?
Here.
Public Safety?
Here.
Controller?
Here.
Recreation?
Here.
Public Information?
Here.
Hearings from citizens, we've already referred to that during caucus, we'll look to that down at the communications from citizens portion. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of April 11th, 2022?
Morano moves to adopt the minutes of the regular meeting of April 11th, 2022, as written.
I have a motion by Morano, second by Muflahi, to adopt the minutes of the regular meeting of April 11th, 2022, as written. Muflahi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdak?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Hearing 5-0, departmental reports, one and two?
Morano moves to receive and file departmental reports, one and two.
All righty, seconds.
I have a motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to receive and file departmental reports, one and two. Muflahi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdak?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried 5-0, communications from division department heads, number three, Director of Recreation, requests city council approve the attached lease agreement between the city of Lackawanna and the Healthy Buffalo Softball League for the use of Veterans Stadium on each Tuesday between May 31st, 2022, and August 31st, 2022. Proof of insurance is attached, the full text of this lease agreement is available in the city clerk's office.
Morano moves to request, subject to review and approval of final lease language by the city attorney.
All righty, second.
I have a motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to approve the request as amended by the city attorney. Muflahi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdak?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried 5-0, number four, city controller advises the city council of the retirement of Anthony DeSantis, Commissioner of Public Works, effective April 15th, 2022.
Morano moves to receive and file with thanks to Mr. DeSantis for his years of exemplary service.
Anderson, second, thanks, Tom.
So we have a motion by Morano, second by Anderson, to receive and file. Muflahi?
Yes, and thank you, Mr. DeSantis.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdak?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried 5-0, number five, city controller advises the city council of the retirement of Lieutenant Robert Janowski, Lackawanna Police Department, effective February 26th, 2022.
Morano moves to receive and file, again, with the thanks of the city to Lieutenant Janowski for his years of fine and exemplary service on the Lackawanna Police Department.
All righty, second.
So I have a motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to receive and file. Muflahi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdak?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried 5-0, number six, Director of Public Safety, requests city council approval for the fire department to advertise for bids for new personal protective equipment. Funds are available from a DASNY grant through Assemblyman Burke's office.
Morano moves to receive and file the request and approve such request.
All righty, second.
I'm sorry, sorry, Council President, what was the second part of your communication?
To receive and file the request and to approve such request, such request.
All right, so I have a motion by Morano, second by Moretti, and I'm going to change the language a little bit, you're going to actually direct me to advertise for bids on behalf of the fire department for...
And that too.
PPF equipment. So, yeah, we don't want them doing that, we'll take care of that. All right, Muflahi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdak?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
All right, carried 5-0. All right, carry five zero. Number seven, Director of Development requests the city council approve the attached resolution pertaining to the splash pad project. Archaeological concerns at Memorial Field Site necessitated the relocation of the splash pad.
Moreno moves to receive and file act on resolution.
Anderson second.
So I have a motion by Moreno, second by Anderson to receive and file act on resolution, Muflahi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Surtik?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Carry five zero, that resolution, be it resolved that the city, Lackawanna City Council authorizes the relocation of the splash pad to the Franklin Street Playground and hereby authorizes the Department of Development, the mayor and the city attorney to take any and all actions necessary. To effectuate the relocation of the splash pad and further authorizes the mayor to execute any and all documents, including grant applications and contracts as may be necessary.
Moreno moves to adopt resolution as written.
Anderson second.
So I have a motion by Moreno, second by Anderson to adopt resolution as written, Muflahi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Surtik?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Carry five zero, number eight, the city attorney has attached a synopsis of a new law passed by the New York State Legislature regarding the open meetings laws. That permits video conferencing and complete copies and file in the city clerk's office.
Moreno moves to table item numbers, uh, eight. Uh, to the next council, city council meeting pending, uh, additional information. And recommendations, um, from the law department, the assessor's office and the controller's office.
Second, Surtik.
Okay, now, Mr. Council President, I thought your city assessor law department directed development was for the communications from citizens. Is the assessor going to be involved in the open meetings law? Information here?
Oh, you, you're right, I, I've gotten ahead of myself.
So the way I have it is I have a, uh, I have a motion by Moreno, second by Surtik to table, uh, this action until the next council meeting pending further information.
I so move.
And we have a second by Surtik already, the roll, Muflahi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surtik?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Carry five zero, number nine, city clerk submits copies of recently completed audits performed by the office of the New York State Controller pertaining to network management and controls and garbage collection fees. Copies of both audits are available for public review in the clerk's office.
Uh, Moreno moves to receive and file and before, refer for, uh, recommendations. Uh, to the law department, assessor's office and controller's office.
Ready second.
So I have a motion by Moreno, second by Moretti to receive and file, refer to the city controller, city assessor, law department for recommendations as to any legislation that may be needed to carry this forth. Uh, Muflahi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Surtik?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Carry five zero. Communications from citizens, number ten, body motion residence submits a communication to the city council regarding twenty-three and twenty-seven Washington Street.
Moreno moves to receive and file a communication and refer to the law department, assessors' office and. And assessors' office and director of development's office for recommendation, uh, needed for the next meeting.
Very good, Muflahi seconds.
So I have a motion by Moreno, second by Muflahi to receive and file, refer the communication to the city assessor, law department, director of development. Uh, for the next meeting for an opinion as to how to move forward. Muflahi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Surtik?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Carry five zero. Business registrations. Natika Evans doing business as Nicky's Diner, which is a restaurant, twelve forty-five Abbott Road.
Moreno moves to approve business registration.
Ready second.
Motion by Moreno, second by Moretti to approve the business registration, Muflahi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Surtik?
Yeah, one quick question, uh. What, where is that, Dean? You know what?
The old cranes.
That's what I thought, okay, yeah, I'm voting yes anyway, I was just wondering what, where it was, thanks.
You're welcome.
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Approve five zero, Mr. Council President?
Um, thank you, Mr. City Clerk, I would like to give the floor at this time. To our first ward councilperson, Amira Muflahi, um. There have been numerous requests and phone calls and concerns about the explosions or loud booms. That are emanating from. The old Bethlehem Steel site, and I believe, uh, councilperson, the first ward, has some information. Um, you've got the floor, Amira, if you so wish to address this.
Uh, thank you, Council President, um, it has been addressed both to myself as well as to the council, as well as the mayor's office. Of the, uh, booms that have been heard throughout, not only the city of Lackawanna, but surrounding cities and towns. Uh, and after, uh, investigation through, um, public safety as well as through the police, uh, station or police department has been, um. It has been, um, discovered that the booms are to deflect thousands of seagulls that have been, uh, congregating along the, um. Within the parameters of the factory that operates there, um. After being, uh, discussed with, um, public safety, they did their due diligence and rectified the situation where it no longer is, um. There's no longer any booms during the night, which is, has been very, very, thank you, um. Uh, John Wolfe for addressing that, uh, it was a very huge nuisance during the nighttime. Uh, and it did spill over to the daytime, which we can handle more, so, um, however, we will continue to look into. Uh, better means, maybe working together with the company, seeing what is another option, so that this noise doesn't continue throughout the day. Uh, I personally cannot make any promises as to, um, uh, a remedy to this situation, however, i- is being looked into. And I just wanted to let the residents know that it is not something that we will just ignore or sweep under the rug, so, uh, although we understand how big of a. Uh, and no sense it may be, uh, there is valid reason as to why it's being conducted and hopefully we can reach some kind of, um. Some kind of a resolution or, uh, a remedy to all of it, however, it is only limited to the daytime, thank God.
Uh, thank you, Councilwoman Muflahi, and as part of that, um, perhaps we should request Director Wolfe. To contact the Department of Environmental Conservation to see what options there are and. What parameters there are for the seagull control and, uh, et cetera on that.
So, Council President? Yes, sir, I'll get on that, I'll get that, on that tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Thanks so much, John. Uh, the next item I'd like to, uh, address is, is, is a question to our now retired, um. Commissioner of Public Works, Tony DeSantis, Tony, do you have an update on? On the, uh, timetable for the installation and replacement of the streetlights? Um, on South Park and Sharon Park, when the other, on Abbott Road, and I believe, was it Weber?
Westbound view.
Westbound view.
Uh, yes, I do, actually, I had spoke with the contractor this morning, um, they were planning to start possibly midweek next week drilling holes for the poles. Uh, they're going to start on South Park, seeing how that one was out the longest. The only thing we have to look at Wednesday morning is the water authorities putting a main line down Roland. And we just want to make sure that they don't interfere with each other, so, uh. We should see some action midweek or next week. Starting with Sharon Park, Wayne and South Park.
Great, Tony, thank you, and, and, uh, and thank you also for the attention you gave to these items, because initially, if I recall correctly. There was, there was no possibility to address those, uh, replacements until late summer, so, uh. Through your due diligence and, and, um. Efforts, uh, that, apparently those are going to be addressed much sooner, so, thank you, Tony.
All right, thank you.
And, um, another item I'd like to call to the public's attention, and I know, uh, the city council and various department heads have been. Aware of this, and perhaps you've read the article, a very complimentary. And a long time coming article in the Buffalo News, I would ask our public informations officer, Chuck Clark. To, uh, perhaps give us some insight into that article and, and address, uh, what actually happened there.
Great, thank you, Mr. Council President, so this, uh, this past week, um, the city of Lackawanna, uh, received some very, very favorable coverage for. Um, our collective vision for development outside of the Bethlehem Steel Complex. And specifically, the article focused in on six, uh, city owned properties, um, as well as our, um. Uh, awareness and, and interest in helping develop some private properties that are for sale. Uh, but this particular article that came out this past week, both in print and online, uh, was a long time coming, this is a, a culmination of. Several different marketing initiatives that have come out of the public information office, you know, starting with supporting, uh, you know, the mayor's division, um, vision, excuse me, for development. Uh, beginning with the unification of the tax rate, the support that the city council provided that, and, and the focus and resources that we've put into, uh, you know, not only the, the city owned properties, but also. Uh, being a partner of the development at Renaissance Commerce Park, so relative to, uh, the six city owned parcels. Um, the reason that this is so significant for the city is that. Um, public relations is probably one of the most difficult parts of marketing that, that you can do, because unlike traditional advertising or events or other types of. Paid programs where you get to, you know, sort, sort of dictate your message and where it goes, uh, public relations is really at, um. The, the discretion of a business reporter, the relationship that somebody like myself has with that reporter. And the ability to cut through clutter, which in the case of the Buffalo News and Buffalo Business First, there are only two business reporters in the entire city. Covering all of development and they literally get hundreds of requests a week to cover their stories. So the fact that, that we not only got coverage that was favorable, but cut through that clutter, uh, says a lot about the message, um, you know, that Mayor Iafalo is delivering from the corner office. That the city council is supporting and that all of the people on this, all the department heads on, on the Zoom call, uh, are supporting the efforts of, so. Uh, you know, Lackawanna's due in this regard was a long time coming, um, they were very favorable, not only in terms of the successes we've had. But the vision that the city collectively has, uh, for trying to connect, uh, not only the properties back onto the tax rolls. But connecting them into, uh, cultural destinations within the city, which is a very common, you know, theme within, um, all of development, but they looked at things like OLV, the library. Uh, our neighboring botanical gardens in South Park, and then just the ability to bring, you know, walkability and vibrancy back to the city of Lackawanna. And, um, to, just for the record, it's not just in the Buffalo News, but, uh, for anybody who's familiar with social media platforms like LinkedIn. Which is really like a professional Facebook page, um, I shared that story, um, for the city of Lackawanna on my personal LinkedIn page. And, and I cannot tell you the number of hits and positive comments I received, not just from friends, but more importantly from developers, architects, engineers. People who had no idea what the city of Lackawanna had to offer and, and the doors that we have open and the opportunities we have open, uh, today. So, um, you know, I thank Jonathan Epstein from the Buffalo News, um, he, he did a wonderful job of listening to the mayor. Uh, of, of listening to me, of talking to other people in the community, uh, both at, at the developer level and, and others about what's going on in Lackawanna and. Um, you know, while there's still a lot more work to be done, uh, Director Jenna can tell you that since she took over, you know, a, a little over a month or so now. You know, the number of inquiries that are coming into the city of Lackawanna, either through the mayor's office, through her office, through my office, and even through the city council, um, are, are growing, uh, every single month, so. Hats off to everybody who, um, you know, has helped make the development process in Lackawanna better, starting with the mayor and the council. And, um, you know, we hope we have more good news to share, uh, not only to the media, but to the public in the, in the months ahead.
Uh, thank you, Chuck, and, and, um, I believe I speak for, uh, all of the city council members, hopefully, um. And many of the residents, Chuck, we'd like to thank you for your efforts in, in shaping the narrative. And the picture that the western, our, our western New York neighbors now have and, and. Uh, CEO of the city of Lackawanna in such a positive light, you have made such a significant difference, Chuck, it, through your efforts. Uh, and your abilities, uh, since you've come aboard as our public informations officer, so Chuck, thank you very much. And congratulations, thank you, thank you.
I appreciate it.
For her efforts and, um, helping shake this narrative also, to Mayor Iafalo, thank you and congratulations. Uh, and before I, I turn this over to anyone else who wishes, again, I, I think as a city council, we'd like to extend our thanks. To, uh, New York State Assemblyman Pat Burke for his efforts in securing the grant. That we, uh, entertained in our agenda earlier regarding updating, uh, firefighting equipment. For our firefighters in the city of Lackawanna, so Assemblyman Burke, thank you very much for your efforts. Uh, anyone else have any table items or old business they wish to discuss at this time?
Can we thank Alan Brown for cleaning up the city seal on the building, it's so beautiful.
Yeah.
Thank you.
If anybody, if anybody hasn't seen it, go to the city Facebook page, um, it's, it's on there, and it was an amazing thing to see that guy on a ladder with a. You know, paintbrush by hand, he was just amazing, so if you see him, big thumbs up, Alan.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else? If not, then Moreno moves to adjourn.
Muflahi seconds.
So I have a motion by Moreno, second by Muflahi to adjourn the meeting, Muflahi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Surtik?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Thanks all.
Good night.
Hey.
Good night, Alan.
Thank you.